Good evening. I'm going to read a short statement before we begin the meeting. The annual budget hearing and regular meeting of the Penfield Board of Education is being held at 7:00 PM today, Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Residents who wish to comment or ask questions during the budget hearing may either call Sharon Urkfits at (249) 5702 or email Nancy Bradstreet@nbradstreet@penfield.edu. Residents will be asked to provide their name, address, and question. The questions will be read following Dr. Sansoussi's presentation of the budget. Until further notice, Board of Education meetings shall be closed to the public under Governor Executive Order 202.1. This meeting will be held via Zoom and livestreamed on Penfield TV, Government Access Channel, Spectrum Cable Channel 1303, and online at www.penfieldtv.org. Or email Nancy Bradstreet@nbradstreet@penfield.edu. The district clerk will lead us in the pledge. The questions will be read following Dr. Sansoussi's presentation of the budget. Until further notice, Board of Education meetings shall be closed to the public under Governor Executive Order 202.1. This meeting is called back to order at 7:10 PM. Any questions or comments? Meeting is called back to order at 7:10 PM. Residents will be asked to provide their name, address, and question. I'm assuming that all of them.
Six in favor, sorry, I had my news on. Six in favor, none opposed, voting carried. Until further notice, Board of Education meetings shall be closed to the point where
Reading of Notice of Annual Budget Hearing. At our last meeting, the Board adopted the 2020-2021 school budget at a time when there are still many unknowns. Certainly, these last few months have been difficult for all of us. Juggling work responsibilities, home life, distance learning, and social distancing have had us all feeling out of sorts and wondering when we will get back to normal. We understand the sacrifices everyone in our community has been making, from our frontline workers to those with lost jobs, to those who are dealing with health concerns. The lift has been huge. We especially want to thank our parents, teachers, and staff, who despite all of these concerns, have worked together to ensure our students continue learning. Amid all of these challenges, we have had to develop a budget proposal without complete information from the state. Our state aid has been frozen, and future cuts are certainly likely. With all of this in mind, we are proposing a 2020-2021 budget of $102,615,305, which represents a 1.9% increase over the current year's budget. We have worked diligently to find spending efficiencies while formulating a budget that continues to support the whole student. This year, we are asking for your support of a proposed tax levy increase of 2.66%, which is at our state-mandated tax levy limit. It is important to note that Penfield has been at or below the state-mandated tax cap ever since it was imposed. In addition to the general fund budget, you will see one proposition on the ballot. This is for the purchase of seven school buses, which will be funded through the School Bus Reserve Fund and the General Fund Budget. As a board, we are passionate about the value of the education provided by the Penfield Central School District. We will continue to advocate for our students and our district in order to preserve the excellent educational program we provide for our students and balance with our residents' budgets. This year's vote will be by absentee ballot only on June 9, 2020. Please remember to return your ballots to the district by 5:00 PM on June 9 to be considered valid. Thank you.
So we turn now to our official budget hearing for the 2020-2021 school calendar. It's May 26, and today is our official budget hearing. So Dr. Sansoussi and I will be walking through some slides to talk about what this budget looks like, and here we go. So we want to make sure that we allow our community to comment or ask questions about the budget during the hearing. And so during this presentation, if you have any questions or a comment, you can do one of two things. You can call our district clerk, Sharon Urkfits, at (249) 5702. As I say that out loud, I believe the number is (249) 5702. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
But I apologize. So that number there is (249) 5702. And just provide your name, address, and question, or you can email our Director of Communications, Nancy Bradstreet@nbradstreet@penfield.edu. And in that email, please provide your name, your address, and question. And then questions will be received, and they'll be read after Dr. Sansoussi's budget presentation and prior to the closing of the hearing. So there's two slides here around the COVID-19 impact.
Tom, we see Mark's screen, but Mark is showing you. He's not showing the slide.
I see the slide.
Really?
Yeah. I see the slide.
So I think we're okay to keep going?
I'll figure it out.
Okay. So we've got the COVID-19 impact slides. I just want to be honest, is typically during our budget hearing, we spend a few slides talking about really the excellence of Penfield and what our students are doing, both in the classroom and athletically. And we really felt that the fact that we've been closed now for 11 weeks, we didn't want to take that time to focus in on all those positives, and there are many, but instead wanted to really focus it around these last 11 weeks. And so, you know, as a district, we really stepped into the closings, and the first being distance learning. And when this COVID-19 pandemic hit our area in mid-March, all the school districts were shut down at a moment's notice and had to begin the process of transitioning to distance learning overnight. And teachers, administrators, and especially our parents have adopted new routines and really working to ensure students are continuing to learn. And it's different, and it's not the traditional school setting that we really hope we can get back to. But we are currently conducting a survey. We have over 1,200 responses, and this feedback will help us refine our distance learning program should we need to continue it next year. We really do want your feedback. That survey went to all families, parents, guardians, and we'll be doing a similar survey for staff in June. Parents as partners, one of our goals is always around partnership. And I just can't, and the district can't thank our families enough. Parents have really been thrust into the world of homeschooling amid the chaos of COVID-19 and the impacts it's had on all of our lives. And here in Penfield, we're so fortunate that our parents and community strongly value education, and they've made every effort to work with us and us with them over the past few months to do what's best for our students. Again, we understand that the distance learning and the needs are not perfect. We're continuing to fine-tune those and do everything we can to make sure students are on track and able to not just succeed, but to really master content during these closings. Our focus with this school board in this district is a commitment to educating the whole student and supporting their social, emotional health. We've talked a lot about this over the last six years. Our counselors continue to be available to students and work with them and their families as needed during this time of school closures. Our staff has also been very creative in producing videos that feature students, encourage them to persevere, let them know that they're loved, and let them know that they're missed by their teachers and their entire school family. You know, my heart, and I think all of our hearts, go out to our senior class of 2020, who has really been hit particularly hard by these closures. We recognize they're missing out on some major milestones and have developed a schedule of alternative and virtual events to celebrate them. And more information will continue to come from the high school, to the families, and to seniors. The budget, obviously, is what we're here for tonight, and it's a great deal of uncertainty around the budget. The state's currently facing a $13.5 billion deficit. We expect our state aid cuts in the near future. In the meantime, we've put together a budget with the best information we have at this time. If there's further reductions to state aid, then we're going to need to use additional reserves or make program staffing reductions in order to make sure we balance the budget with what we are presenting to you tonight. And so a lot of work has been put into this. The school board has been instrumental, and we really are doing everything we can to make sure that we can build a budget that's balanced, but also is a long-term support for the district. Our three goals, we talk about these a lot, but it's something we really take seriously. This district has a long-term, a long process of having these goals, which is academic achievement and excellence, especially the development of the whole student, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. Everything that we do, we really look through the lens of these three goals to make sure that we're giving the community, you know, the best that we can give them, and at the same time, being fiscally responsible, knowing that the world we live in is one of a little turmoil right now. I will turn it over now to Dr. Sansoussi, who will go further in depth with the 2020-2021 budget overview.
Dr. Pundin, thank you very much. Tonight's presentation is the budget hearing, which is a bit different than the budget we've seen before. So the state mandates that, at least at this meeting, we present our budget in a particular way. So this was adopted a number of years ago to standardize across the state the way budgets present their data to their community. Really, it's in the state's interest to provide sort of that comparability. We continue and we've worked through our budget in a manner, for many, many months now, in a manner that makes sense for our community, for our understanding of the way the budgets are put together. But tonight, for this meeting, we're going to present it in the format of what's called the three-part budget. In terms of quick facts, it's a 1.9% budget-to-budget increase on a balanced budget on both sides, so 1.9% revenue increase as well. That, as we'll see further, that's a 2.66% tax levy increase, which is at our levy limit. We have been at or below the levy limit for the nine years of the tax cap. So we have not, in the history of the tax cap, saw it in override. Our estimated tax rate for our largest town, the town of Penfield, is 2.07%, or about 55 cents per thousand of assessed value. That's for Town of Penfield residents. It's not true for all our towns because of some changes in equalization. I'll get to that later in the presentation. But as Tom mentioned, this is a budget year of uncertainty. So we've been engaged in the budget process for quite some time as we've moved through our normal process, and then normal stopped with the incident of the COVID pandemic. As part of those uncertainties, the state legislature adopted a budget on April 1 that determines our state aid. They adopted that budget in the midst of the epidemic and not knowing what state revenues would be, knowing however well that there'd be impacts to the state budget. So along with an adopted state budget that essentially holds our revenues flat, I'll cover that a little bit more later in the presentation, it also adopted triggers that allow the Division of Budget to reduce state aid, state aid to schools, along with the rest of the budget, actually, to reduce the state's expenditure budget, depending on revenues and expenditures on the state's level and three measurement periods. So ending April 30, June 30, and December 31, the Division of Budgets authorized to develop a plan to reduce state spend, and that would include state aid to schools, including our state aid. And then the state legislature has 10 days to adopt an alternative plan, or the DOB plan takes effect. You'll note that as we sit here tonight, we're past the April 30 deadline. The state budget was out of balance by more than the 1% trigger on April 30. However, DOB's not released yet revised budget information. We're rapidly coming up on the June 30 deadline, but we're waiting, actually, municipalities, school districts all across the state are waiting at this point to find out what those reductions will be. Much of that depends, as Governor Cuomo points out daily, on the results of the conversation in Washington around the federal stimulus. So, you know, a budget's always a financial plan. We always grapple with some uncertainty, but this is certainly uncertainty on a level that we've not seen before. We've managed our budget through the years on things both large and small. We've made, Penfield has a long history of being strategic, thinking carefully about long-term impacts of its decisions, about being careful about not thinking about budgets as a one-year event. And we're going to continue to do that as we manage our way through this. That means looking at things both large and small. We've engaged in workers' compensation consortions. In consultation with our other Monroe County districts and in cooperation with them, we've self-insured our health insurance plan in significant savings. We've sought out energy efficiencies. We do little things. But again, this year, those things enable us to bring you a balanced budget, but aren't going to insulate us from future changes. Right now, as we sit, our budget is $102.6 million. That's about a $1.8 million increase budget-to-budget, or just about 1.9%. And now this begins the three-part presentation. So the state requires that we categorize that $102 million into three components: administrative capital and program. I'll go through the details of that in a second. But the administration budget comprises about 11%, 14% in capital, and program about three-quarters of our budget. Those numbers are essentially unchanged, very close to last year's numbers. We don't, there's not really a significant change there from year to year. The next, this slide then is the administrative component of the budget. You can see that it's about $11 million, an increase of about $212,000. That's about 1.9% for this component of the budget. It consists of the items you see here, Board of Education, central administration, so that's us, as well as building administration, records retention, oh, I'm sorry, not building administration, that's, I apologize, curriculum development, the administration of the transportation department, and the benefits associated with the people that are comprised in this budget. The program component, about 75% of our budget, is $76.6 million. That is increasing by about 1.3% year to year. And you can see, and this should not be surprising, the largest components of this are the instructional component, which is simply salaries of folks in classrooms throughout our buildings, also included in the program component. And I think this is interesting, we look at that, we tend to look at that differently as we examine our budget locally, but I think rightfully so, the state's mandate here includes transportation as a program component because it's that transportation system that allows all of our students to access school, that ride to school that makes the program available to them. So it's included here, as well as census and the benefits associated with those staff. And finally, the capital component, which includes operations and maintenance, and transfers, transfers to, or bus purchase, transfers for capital projects, transfers, if there were any, to reserve. And primarily, the single largest item in this budget is debt service. So you see a number of changes overall to the budget. This portion of the budget is up by about 5%, that's $709,000. The budget in total, about $14.8 million. Really, that change driven by the increase in debt service associated with our ongoing capital project, as well as a change in our budget, a shift in our budget of that transfer for summer school, which was previously in a different component and moved here to comply with the rules around reporting. So that's the three-part component of the budget. On the expenditure side, again totaling $102 million. On the revenue side of our budget, you see our state aid held essentially flat, although that's a little bit misleading. That revenue component, that $247,000 increase, includes about $342,000 of federal stimulus aid, aid that was directed towards school districts and in the CARE Act, the first federal stimulus bill. At the time that the state government adopted their budget, the time that Albany adopted on April 1, the state aid component of our budget, they included a pandemic adjustment, reducing Penfield's and all school districts' budgets by the amount of that CARE Act appropriation. So we will get $342,000 in CARE Act funding. That's included in that $28.2 million. The state's reducing their obligation to schools by a similar dollar amount. So that allowed the state to help balance their budget going into the COVID crisis. But what it really does is replaces $342,000 of our funding with one-time stimulus money. So we know we're flat for the year. We know, though, that that brings some, some ill winds for future budgets. You can see the other changes in our budget are, we're reducing our anticipated level of sales tax by $200,000. We know that sales tax receipts are down. They're shared by the county with the school district. We know they're down across the state, certainly down in Monroe County. We're anticipating reduced receipts. There are other minor changes in the budget, but really the other component of note here is the, you see the increase of 2.66%, 2.7 on this slide, of estimated real property tax, again, at the cap. There, that levy is the amount, at 2.66%, is the amount of money that we collect in taxes. So that's a dollar amount. It's collected and calculated for all of us in the terms of rate per thousand of assessed value of real property, of homes and commercial property. And that's impacted by the state equalization rate. This isn't a number that we established, or a number that's established by the town, rather, the State Department of Equalization and Assessment makes this calculation. And what it represents is the estimated value, the proportion, I should say, of what homes in a community would sell for on the market versus what they're assessed at. So essentially, they're a ratio of market value against assessment. That varies in some communities, but it's varied for all of our towns because I think we all have recognized that going into the COVID epidemic, going into the most recent changes, the market was, the market was hot. Homes were selling quickly, and the state has estimated that homes were selling at higher rates, at higher values than what they were assessed at. So they've adjusted equalization rates. That's out of our hands, but it's consequential to us, and you'll see why in a bit. That reality, that previous reality, ran into the COVID epidemic when towns that would normally, when that happens, would reassess. They reassessed to correct, to make sure that assessments and market values were close, so that equalization rates were around 100%. But because of the social distancing, because of the chain, because of the required changes in public meetings and so forth that would have to happen, towns delayed their reassessment. So Parenton canceled theirs, Penfield delayed theirs, Brighton just completed one, so they will be at 100. Getzford had started one and delayed it. So as a result, you see the changes here of those equalization rates. So Penfield's falls again, 3% from 90% to 87. Brighton remains, it will be at 100. Pittsburgh falls from 195. You can see the changes in the other towns. So that has an impact, a direct impact, in the calculation of tax rates. So the 2020 equalization rates for those respective towns are on this slide, along with the tax rate per thousand and the dollar change per thousand of assessed value. For our two largest towns, for Penfield and for Brighton, they're about 2% and slightly down in Brighton, respectively. However, in the other towns with falling equalization rates, the increases are larger, and you can see those numbers here. I want to spend just a moment explaining why that's so and why the state established a system like this, and how that works. The property tax is based, as we all know, I think, on the value of the real property, and the assumption behind all this is that that assessment should represent the market value of property. So the state, Department of Equalization and Assessment, makes those calculations. But the intention, the intention behind the scenes, or the overarching goal here, is to ensure that everyone with the same market value of a home is paying the same, essentially, the same tax bill. So I'm showing how that works for the towns in Penfield. There's some slight differences for Wayne County folks because of differences in sales tax sharing, but the same thing's true in Wayne County. You can see here that, according to the state, a home in Penfield with a market value of $100,000 is assessed at about 87% of its rate. So that, how home would be assessed at $87,000. So the tax rate of just about $27 returns $2,375 in taxes. And then it's strictly a matter of math. The math equalizes so that that market value home, no matter what it's assessed at across the towns, based on market conditions or local assessment practices, so that as a matter of fairness, the tax bill is the same. But what that means is that there is a real difference in tax rates between the towns. We've included that information along with this chart that estimates impact in the newsletter that's going out to all of our communities and should be arriving at homes today and tomorrow, certainly in the next few days. It shows last year's equalization rate, this year's equalization rate, the change per thousand on assessed value, along with the dollar value of that increase for a $200,000 home, which is our average, with Basic Star and with Senior Enhanced Star. So the folks can make an important decision on what's a pretty confusing and complicated thought. Also, in this meeting, and in our, is our required disclosures. So in addition to the three-part budget presentation that we just went through, there's some required disclosures and also some required notice that I need to go through. One of those is required compensation information. So we are required, as part of this process, to disclose anyone receiving a salary of more than $141,000 for this year, that varies by year to year, or anyone who has the word superintendent in their title, so superintendent, assistant superintendent, and so on. These are those folks for us. Also, is this included here is the school budget notice. This is a summary of the information that I just presented, including Uh, this is a summary of the information uh that I just presented, including uh last year's budget, this year's budget. As well as some contingent budget information. So contingent budget. Um, has um a specific set of rules to it. A contingent budget is what would be, what would be required to be adopted by the Board of Education. If the budget were defeated. Um, normally, um, uh, budget must be present, can be presented twice. So if the budget's defeated, the board may immediately adopt a contingent budget. That would require that the, they um abide by the contingent budget rules, some of which are explained here. Uh, but also to get, uh, also would be required to adopt a levy of, um, or to move. Make whatever cuts are necessary to get to zero um, as a levy. So uh, this provides some of that information. Along with um, uh, some of the contingent budget uh required rules in terms of what may be included. Uh, in each of the com- uh, component pieces uh were, were had to pass. Um, also included yeah is our proposed use of reserves and proposed changes to use it. So you can see here that the majority of our, our budget is, our reserves are in the form of capital reserves that we've used. Uh, through the years to assist in the funding of, of ongoing capital projects. That allows us to, to. Um, manage our, our buildings and uh, manage our, honestly, the impact of necessary capital projects on the tax levy. Um, but they're not available for us to use um, for support of the general fund budget. Um, some of the other lev- um, reserves may be used for that because we'll be addressing um, potential cuts. As we move forward through this process, um, partially through the use of reserves. So we're planning on that. Um, we're planning on uh potential uses of workers' comp unemployment reserve. Um, we're planning on funding and using uh reserves for retirement contribution. Because one of the things we know, also know will be happening as we move into this is uh. But is probably and potentially increased retirement system rates. Um, as um, we move through that, uh, as we move through that reality. Uh, Basic Star exemption impact is a calculation we're required to report. Again, uh. Uh, this is, the state legislature just wants to be sure that everyone knows what the value of a Basic Star exemption. Uh, for all of us who enjoy that. So it's a required disclosure and this year, uh, that value is seven hundred and twelve dollars. Um, this is not a required uh part of the presentation, but we do want to make sure that everyone understands what will be in that sample ballot. Uh, so you, there will be a, a resolution um, uh, adopting or requesting approval. Um, of our annual budget, a hundred and two million dollars that I referenced uh earlier in this presentation. Also included will be a separate proposition requesting approval of budget, uh, I'm sorry, of buses. Uh, this is part of our ongoing bus replacement plan. Um, so every year we replace um, a few of our buses. That. Allows us to not have to replace them all at once, which would indeed be a heavy lift. So we request approval. Uh, every year that's funded in part from bus purchase reserve and in part from the general fund budget. Uh, so the general fund budget for this year's portion of that does not increase. Uh, we're reaching more heavily into. Um, the reserve for that. Uh, but we are requesting authority to replace six sixty-six passenger buses and one thirty passenger bus. Also on the ballot this year are uh, uh, candidates for the Board of Education. There are seven candidates for two seats. Uh, they are listed um, on the ballot in alphabetical order. Uh, you see their names here. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Putnam for some final thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Sansucci. If you don't mind, um, uh, what I'll do is, um, if you don't mind unsharing your screen, I'll. Put up the, my PowerPoint, which is just a continuation of yours. Just give me one moment. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Wave. Thank you. So just as a reminder, um, for public comment during uh Dr. Sansucci's presentation or now. If the public has any comments or questions they'd like to ask, they can call the district clerk Sharon Irk Fitz. At her correct number that I have up there, two four nine five seven zero two. You just have to provide your name, address, and your question or comment. Or you can email our director of communications, Nancy Bradstreet at nbradstreet@penfield.edu. Same, please provide your name, your address, and your question or comment. And in a moment, those questions and comments will be read um, by Nancy and Sharon. And uh, you can submit any last minute questions now while I continue on to this next slide. And just talk a little bit about the June ninth vote, because as Mark has mentioned, and we all know it's very different. Than a typical school budget vote and Board of Election, uh, sorry, Board of um, uh, the School Board Election. And so the voting per the governor's executive order is all through absentee ballots. Absentee ballots are being mailed to qualified voters this week. If you require additional ballots, please contact Sharon Irk Fitz at sirkfitz@penfield.edu. Um, we did attempt to make sure that all qualified voters are receiving a ballot. But if you receive them and feel that you have somebody else in your house that's a qualified voter, we just ask you to reach out to Sharon Irk Fitz. Voters must mark all ballots with a check mark or an X in order for them to be valid. Those directions are on the ballot, but we really want to stress. That they must have a check mark or an X for it to be valid. Uh, ballots must be received by five P M. June ninth to be valid. So you receive them at the end of this week, you put it back in the mail, it should not be a problem, they'll be here by June ninth. But if you are going to vote a little bit later, or you forget to mail it. Then you just need to make sure we receive it by five P M. And that means you can drop it off at the district office. And put it in the mailbox on the building. As long as we receive them by five P M., uh, they'll be reviewed, make sure they're valid and be counted. Uh, approved election inspectors will hand count the ballots on June ninth in the Penfield High School West Gym. And the results will be announced when the count is finished. Depending on the number of ballots, the process may extend into the next day. We're not sure, the hand counting is going to add some time. Uh, we know that we're sending out ballots to all qualified voters, so. Um, w- we want to make sure that we do this right. Obviously, everything's been reviewed by the school attorney to make sure that um, our process is aligned with the executive order. And um, as soon as we know the results, we will release them. We're hoping to be able to do that June ninth. Um, but uh, if we need to go into the tent to continue voting, we'll follow those of, of those, that process. And now, um, questions? And I think it's uh, uh, public comment first. So. Are there questions, Nancy or Sharon? Have you received questions?
I have not received any questions.
Thank you, Sharon.
I have one email question. It came from Jill in Andy Perumba from ten old Westfall Drive. And the question is, how will you determine how many ballots to send to each household for the upcoming election?
We, um, I, I um, have the board clerk here, so I'll put her on the spot. Sharon, if you don't mind, can you just walk through the process? Of determining how many ballots got sent, will be sent to each household?
Sure. We had, um, the BOCs pull us, the district census data from. Um, our database and attach names to all of our addresses. So if people have completed the census, um, most eligible voters are on that list. I'm sending out approximately eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty ballots. Um, so we feel we're in a good place. And have most um eligible voters covered. If by any chance. Um, some addresses are missed because they never gave us their um, data that they moved into the house. They can simply call me or email me and I will send them a ballot. Um, verifying that they lived there and that they're a eligible voter. I guess, um, I don't know if that's clear enough or.
I think so. I can add that you mentioned that we're utilizing the census data. And just as a reminder, that's not the U S Census, that is the Penfield Central School District Census that we send out every year. And so we're not using data from ten years ago, we're using data from this year. Um. And, and obviously the vast number of people do fill out that census when they come in, especially if they have children, if they move in and don't have children, many people still fill out that census. And we believe based on speaking with the school attorney that, um, we've, uh, that we have collected. Uh, as many names that we know that live in the community to receive these ballots. I think it's important to note too, for the board and the community. That the ballots can't just go legally, we can't send them to a, a household like we send the prestige newsletter. That can just go to the household at the address. It has, the ballots have to be mailed to people by name. And so that is why it's not just a stop by and pick up a ballot. Um, but they have to be mailed to the person, uh, the qualified voter's name at that address. And so obviously, uh, Mrs. Irk Fitz, Ms. Bradstreet, Dr. Sansucci and I, I spent a lot of time, mostly Nancy and Sharon, really working through. Making sure that we are um, uh, capturing all qualified voters within the district, but it's also online. It's also, every district received a postcard explaining this process. And then uh, it, it's online and we're talking about it now. So people who don't receive one by early next week can, can uh, reach out. And we'll make sure as long as there are qualified voter in the, in the community, then they can vote.
And can I just add one thing? Do you mind if I just add one more comment? Tom?
Sure.
Um, since the postcards were mailed out, I've received, um, probably, I would say hundreds of emails. Um, asking for extra ballots and I, our list, I would say was ninety-nine percent accurate. When they said they wanted an, an additional ballot for their husband or wife or uh, a student that lived there. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I already had everybody that they needed on my list. So I was pretty happy that we have a really good database.
That's great. I think also Sharon, you had mentioned that, um, we're sending it to, um, people who are, uh, uh, under twenty-one. And, and twenty and under at the, at the home, right?
Including twenty-one-year-olds.
All right, so twenty-one and younger who, who have lived in, in that home. So really knowing that if you're a college student and you move back home. Because COVID nineteen shut down campus or because your semester's over, you are a qualified voter, you're over eighteen, you, your residence is up in Penfield. And that therefore you could vote in this um, school board vote and election. Uh, that concludes our um, hearing.
I have one more.
All right, Nancy. Oh, you got one more?
One more. Um, this is from Regina Nichols, thirty-three Helmsford Way. Uh, she missed part of the meeting but wanted to know, um, did we review any planned possible layoffs? And if yes, uh, what are they?
I, I think, um, what we could say is that no, she did not miss anything about planned layoffs. Uh, we are in conversation, uh, Dr. Sansucci did talk about how to balance that budget. And that, you know, based on the state aid or therefore lack of state aid coming in, we don't have that number yet. But it is possible, um, that we will see reductions. At the last board meeting on May twelfth, I'll just share as Dr. Sansucci walked through sort of the three tiers. Of, of what reductions would look like, our process. But we're, we have not to this point actually said what any reductions would be. We just know that we have the situation, which is we may be getting less revenue because of uh, less state aid. And the only way to fix that is to make sure that we are balancing our budget with our expenditures. And since, you know, close to eighty percent of our, our budget is, is staff and, um, and uh, and, and insurance. That we, that is something that we have to look at as a school board and as a district. Were there any other questions, Nancy or Sharon?
I have no questions from the public.
I, I don't have any others.
Thank you. I'll, uh, uh, um, say that this concludes our, our budget hearing. And um, Catherine, I'll turn it back over to you.
Hey, thank you. So we are now on the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda as amended, as printed in, uh, on your agenda?
I'm on.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Six in favor and none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, tonight there is no trifles report, so we will land to special reports, um, textbook presentations.
Yeah, so we have, uh, with us tonight, uh, Nicole Whitehead, our, our direct. I'll turn it over to Shane Waters.
Yes.
Yes. And so we're getting.
All right. Please send out the. Um, so what we have for tonight, tonight are resources that we would be forced to put forth or. For you to consider for our middle school science program. We, as you know, we ha- um, moved towards an integrated science curriculum. This school year, the nineteen, uh, and then two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Was our first year of doing the integrated curriculum at sixth grade. And next year will be our first year of doing seventh grade, fully integrated, and then the following year, eighth grade. Um, we have a very, um, well-thought-out implementation plan to ensure that all of our students are ready. When the new, um, science standards are aligned with the regions. Um, so for your consideration at sixth grade is FOS, it's a FOS kit. And uh, one of the reasons why we really like this resource is it is extremely hands-on. It has excellent teacher preparation materials. And because these standards are integrated now. Um, are, are based with a lot of new content. And a lot of new, um, science and engineering practices that are part of the standard. And so we really found that a resource was needed for our middle school teachers. Um, not only to feel more comfortable with the content, but to fully engage with the new standards as they are intended to be. Um, which is lots of inquiry and hands-on materials and reading about real authentic. Um, phenomena and science problems. Um, so we landed on FOS for the sixth grade. And um, we really like the resource. Like I said, it is very teacher-friendly. It has an online, um. Textbook feature, which given the uncertainty of our situation for education, um, is not a bad option for us to have. Um, as that just opens up more resources for our students. So, um, very engaging and, um, we were really happy with this textbook. Um, so I'm now going to turn it over to Shane and she's going to very briefly. Describe the seventh and eighth grade resource we'd like to recommend.
Yes, so for seventh grade, um, we're looking at the Scienceaurus resource. Um, this is a reference book that is completely aligned to the new science standards. So it includes emphasis on things like human impact, um, engineering and natural resources, things that were not previously emphasized in our old version of the science standard. The seventh grade team, um, would like to use this, um, as a, a builder of vocabulary, a builder of background knowledge. Um, it would really be a reference text and they're looking for class sets of this text. So it would be an in-class. As students are doing an investigation, trying to figure something out, they'd have a go-to resource. Um, for the models and the diagrams and the explanations that they need to understand, um, what they're doing. Um, so this, this is the resource that the seventh grade team's looking at. And then our eighth grade team is looking at Amplify Science. Um, this is a complete comprehensive resource. It includes unit plans, lesson plans, those lesson plans, um, have both. Those lesson plans um have both hands-on investigations and computer simulations that come along with the um their whole resource. Embedded formative assessments as well as summative assessment. All of the units are built from the ground up to align with our new science standard. They are phenomena-driven, which means that the students are tasked with either solving some kind of mystery or designing a solution to a problem throughout the unit. That problems introduced at the beginning and they spend multiple lessons gathering evidence, having experiences and learning how to solve that problem. And then the culminating assessment is really writing an argument as to how they would solve that problem. Um so it's very authentic, very engaging, and our eighth grade team actually had a chance to pilot one of these units this year. And the student-written work at the end of the unit was some of the best they've seen in science. Even kids who are reluctant to write were really excited to to make their argument. Um this resource does allow for flexible interactions. Um so it does have um electronic slides, electronic um access for students where they can actually submit their work electronically. But it also comes with complete access to printable PDFs for the student investigation guide. Um so teachers can work back and forth between print materials or electronic materials as they need to with the Amplify Science resource.
So with that, does anybody have any questions for us regarding any of the three resources we just briefly spoke about?
Board members? Got to speak up. I can't see uh raised hands, so anybody have any questions? Okay, well, Nicole and Shane, thank you for coming tonight. I hope you all are staying well and um staying, you know, staying cool on a day like today. We had snow two weeks ago. So, you know, if if we need any more reinforcement about the crazy times we're living in. But it was great to see both of you and um we appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity, um and have a great rest of the evening.
Thanks. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Uh that concludes special reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. So um visitor speaking time, I've explained that uh we can't allow it. So we'll move on to student representative and of course, I've gone on about how much we miss Levia and we do miss our Levia and um hope you're doing well. And so now we go to superintendent's reports. Okay, Tom, are you there? Okay. Is everyone there?
I'm here.
I'm here. I think he's frozen.
Yeah, it seems like Tom's frozen.
Yeah.
So let's give him a few minutes to get back on. See if he's available.
The recording has stopped. This meeting is being recorded.
See Tom back?
It it said on my screen that he was. Tom, are you there?
I mute Tom.
He froze again.
All right, there's Tom. Is Mark on? Mark and Susie?
Mark is here.
All right. Okay, Tom.
Okay. So we uh when I uh uh got kicked off by Zoom, I last I heard was you were talking about our student rep, Levia.
Yes, and how much we miss her and we hope she's doing well. And then I said we were moving on to superintendent reports.
Perfect, okay.
Yep.
I'm sharing my screen. Can everybody see it okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So this this evening, I do have some student and staff honors. I have a COVID-nineteenth update and then I do have the budget review here, but I think that was the hearing, wasn't it, Mark? So I think I think we'll get through here. So uh we have a great uh it's always nice talking about our students, especially when we haven't seen them in so long in person. So congratulations to PHS senior Mara Hepard on being named the recipient of the twenty-twenty Penfield Art Association Award. Mara is planning to attend the University of Rochester in the fall, majoring in digital media studies. And just a very talented artist and Penfield student. Nice job, Mara. Uh speaking of nice job, we have to celebrate two of our board members this evening. Um school board you uh presented to Barb Abiars the Board Lifetime Achievement Award for Leadership Development Opportunities uh totaling five hundred points through their uh PD trainings that they do. So way to go, Barb. And also to Lisa Benati-Chidzie, who received the Board Mastery Award for Leadership Development Opportunities totaling two hundred and fifty points. So congratulations to both of you. I know um board members are obviously volunteer and you put a lot of hours in to continue your own professional development on leadership and um how to be a best school board member to support your districts. So thank you on behalf of the district and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Catherine and Lisa.
Uh I now go with my COVID-nineteenth update. And just talk a little bit about, as you know, we're closed through the end of the school year. The governor did just share that summer school is also a no-go in person. We are in conversations with BOCs for our uh summer school program that we run through BOCs. One, and the possibility of a virtual summer school, distance learning summer school. Um but those uh those um final decisions have not been determined yet. Um Penfield continues to focus on our three overarching goals during these required school closings. And just want to talk about while we know distance learning is not perfect, it's not what we planned for, it's not what we want. We are still committed to academic excellence and the whole student. We still are focusing on much of what we do with partnerships. I can't thank enough the community organizations that have come forward to support our students, to support our school district. And I can never say thank you enough to our parents and guardians at home who were really uh thrown into distance learning and having to work at home and also try to help their students learn. And so thank you so much for that work and that partnership. And we're going to continue to talk about what we can do to make sure that your voices are heard and that our system moving forward is as strong as it possibly can be. And then obviously fiscal responsibility is something that during this very difficult time, and we just heard from the budget hearing from Dr. Sansucci today, is an area that we're continuing to look at on how we can make sure we provide the best for our students but also stay underneath the cap and continue to work on um our our budget issues knowing that the state aid numbers still aren't in and we are predicting reductions in New York State aid. I want to talk a little bit about school calendar. And um so the board is aware and the community is aware is that the the last executive orders from the governor made it very clear that uh distance learning had to continue through all breaks. And so any break that we had planned in the calendar had to be a school day. And so that's why our students still received work and teachers were still providing work and and feedback and Zooms and meetings and Teams through April break, as well as this past Friday, which on our calendar was a vacation day. Um and so that being said, the other thing is really important to understand is that the governor's executive order about the school closing said that school districts would be okay under the hundred-and-eighty-day requirement as long as we stayed closed when the governor told us to close. Well, we closed in Penfield on March sixteenth and March seventeenth. The first day of official New York State closing was Wednesday, the eighteenth. So all that means is that those two days that Penfield decided to close before the governor closed us, we have to use those as emergency school closures. And thankfully, we planned for snow days and didn't get as much snow as we typically do in Rochester, although it felt like it snowed every day, uh but not on not on school days at between five AM and seven AM when that really matters for school closings. So those first two days that we closed for uh COVID uh closings uh don't count uh for us. They count against us, which is why we have to use snow days, but we had two snow days left, so we're okay there. So when we take a look at the New York State Required School Calendar, um our last day for students has to be June sixteenth. Our last day for teachers who are a collective bargaining group, there's a contract and teachers work a hundred-and-eighty-seven school days plus a a swing day, one eighty-eight. And that would bring us to Friday, June nineteenth. So this information will go out tomorrow uh to families. Um I will just share with you that every school district in the state is going to fall around the same last day of June sixteenth and the same last day for staff around June eighteenth or nineteenth. Um so it's about, it depends on how you look at this. For our s- our high school students, their last day of instruction is typically the first week of June, right before Regents' exams. And then they only come to school if they have a Regents' exam. So those students will see this as a a few extra days that they need to come to school. Our middle school and elementary typically go into that next week. So they will be, their 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 school calendar will be a little bit shorter um based on this. The uh what we've learned, we've learned a lot through um the COVID-nineteen, eleven weeks so far of school closings. So we've learned that, and I'm not ashamed to say it, that as a district, we need to have a consistent platform for distance learning. Uh we have a number of different platforms being used now. It's caused, obviously, email overload. It's caused some confusion. It's not perfect. Um last week, um uh about a week and a half ago, we shared with parents that we were going to make some changes, which uh limited the number of emails that went out at the um at all levels, the at the K through eight level. Uh it's basically one email from a teacher, a lead teacher, that shares in that the plan for all the teachers the students would see if they were here for a traditional day. I do know that we received a number of thankful emails because it just immediately cut down on the number of emails that were being sent uh and helped organize students. We know it's not perfect. We're continuing to work with all the local districts and listening to what they're doing, what we can do better as well. We need to ensure that all students have a device to work with. We handed out about six hundred devices to families without a computer or uh families that had four or more students and only one computer, we were able to give an additional uh computer to work with. But we do know still that we have thousands of students in our district that do not have a computer at their fingertips that they can use. We have families sharing a computer. You can't do uh you can't do Zooms that way if kids have to share computers. You can't do synchronous learning where all the students are on at the same time. We also know that we need to continue on supporting the social-emotional learning of students. We've heard from parents and from uh from students themselves about missing out on clubs and activities and and obviously the loss of athletics in their season this year um has has been uh been been tough on our students and on our staff as well. So we know we need to continue looking at what we can do to build the social-emotional learning during a school closing. The other thing we've learned is really critical. We have an incredible team of professionals in this district that we refer to here as Team Penfield, devoted to supporting students. They know it's not perfect, but they go uh above and beyond to make sure that they can help. And it's not just the teachers who are doing a great job, it's all aspects, it's it's every group uh here. Uh I will just mention it's our our buildings and grounds folks who are coming in to clean and making sure things are going to be ready. It's our food service who have been handing out meals on a regular basis every day um since this started. We also have administrators who are helping hand out food and food distribution and obviously trying to lead their staff and their communities through this difficult time. Um I know I will leave out a group, but I can't say enough that every single group has really stepped up and is supporting um our Penfield students during this difficult time. And we also have uh queer as can be, just awesome families and students. Our students are are really doing an incredible job navigating this difficult time. Families have been wonderful. It's okay to be supportive of the district and have some questions or suggestions about distance learning. We welcome that. We want to hear the feedback and the insight, and that's from all groups. It's okay to say, "We love Penfield, but we'd like to see something change," and and please know we're open to that. So what's our plan moving forward now that we know these things? Um families received a survey to gather feedback on distance learning and what's been happening. So that got emailed to every family. We already have uh uh over twelve-hundred responses to that survey. We're leaving it open for a couple more weeks because we want to learn as much as we can. So as we look towards the future, we're better prepared for distance learning. Our staff, who's also a a a critical partner in this, is going to be receiving a similar survey in June that will gather feedback through the month of June. These surveys and a number of other data points, including student feedback, is going to be used to formulate our approach to distance learning in the future if needed. Um we don't know what the fall looks like now. Um there's still a lot of conversations. New York State is giving guidelines to schools about reopening in June and we will have to submit a reopening plan in July. Um that is all we know right now. We haven't seen the guidelines from the state, and so we're waiting for that. But what's our plan moving forward about devices? How do we ensure that our distance learning can truly support our students? That every student has a device in their hands so we can do more synchronous learning, that we can do more support. And so what we've been working on, an incredible team here, is to ensure that each student has a device starting in the fall of twenty-twenty. By uh we are planning a one-to-one initiative for the fall of twenty-twenty. So uh each student, our goal is going to be that each student is going to be issued a device for accessing uh the internet, but also really accessing Microsoft three-sixty-five as our distance learning platform. So the district has been talking about moving to a one-to-one, uh one device per one student for the last few years. And really where we landed was um we really wanted to focus on the professional development for social-emotional learning. We have a five-year plan we've talked about with the board and the community. And that once we sort of got that under our belt, our hope was to then move and transition to PD, professional development around the digital classroom and what we could do to support that. Um we really feel as a district that with the COVID-nineteenth situation and not being ready to move one-to-one, um that 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 has hindered us in our distance learning approach. And so um thank you to the team here that put together and looked at it. We uh looked at all of our existing devices and then said, "Okay, let's take all those devices." And instead of leaving in the buildings, we assign them to students. And then we need to buy more laptops to make sure we cover that. Being fiscally responsible, one of the things we did was said, "Okay, we actually had a purchase for desktop computers." Because classrooms still have some desktop computers, our computer labs are desktop computers. So if we're going to move to one-to-one, we don't need desktop computers in a computer lab and we don't need desktop computers in a classroom. So we transitioned working with BOCs to shift that cost and say, instead of buying desktops, which are much more expensive than laptop, we're going to buy laptops and be able to outfit our students. So there's still a lot of work to go in on this. There's still a lot of work on the rollout, which devices students will have. But right now I can tentatively say the order is in. We're hopeful that they will arrive and we're ready to hand out laptops in the fall. Hopefully to physical students who are coming into our building safe and healthy because we have an incredible reopening plan. But the worst-case scenario is we have a setup to uh distribute computers because we're still required to be closed. I'm an optimist, I am idealist, and I really hope that we'll be able to hand those computers out to kids. There is a cost to this, but it's a cost that we feel is critically important because if we have to close for an extended period of time again, um we we know that we can't do this. We're not alone. Many districts have moved to one-to-one prior to this and other districts are doing it right now as we are to say this experiment with distance learning can only get better if students have access to their own device and we can use Microsoft three-sixty-five as our platform. So a part of that is teachers and administrators have already been giving professional development step. They've got to get through all of us, including me, get through some uh required professional development on utilizing Microsoft three-sixty-five as a distance learning tool. And when students return to school um in in real or virtual, we'll also be supporting our students in learning how to utilize the features of Microsoft three-sixty-five. Many of our secondary students are already doing it. They're on Microsoft Teams, they're already accessing it. But our elementary stu- school students, not so much, and so we're working through that process. One of the things I want to be really honest as we build this plan is this doesn't mean that all students will bring a laptop home with them every day. When we take a look at this plan, we're looking at primarily our high school students being able to bring that laptop home and bring it back in terms of teachers being able to put homework on teams. Instead of handing out a piece of paper at the end of the day, they can upload it in the Teams and students can do that work at home. And then my own students can never say, Dad, I forgot my homework assignment, I can't do it. Because I'll be able to say, why don't you log in the Teams? And it's probably right there. So, so we're still working on a lot of those details, but we learned through this process that it's something that we need to do. And we're able to fund it this year out of the, the shift in the POs from desktop to laptop, as well as using some of our year-end funds because we know it's important. It would be about a four-year turnaround process. The laptops last about four years. And in that time, we will be finding funds to continue this process for as long as we can. And we'll obviously be collecting a lot, a lot of data along the way on how is this supporting student learning? Is it supporting student achievement as we move forward? Our other next steps really is around grading and final grades and GPAs. When I take a look at the survey results just tendively now, we still have a lot of questions from parents of secondary students because we, you know, they're worried, as are their children, about what will these distance learning, this distance learning experiment? What will it do to their final grade? What will it do to their GPA? So we've been working through those. I'll get an email out tomorrow to all of our families. It's only going to impact students who are in a credit-bearing course. So that are, that's students in ninth through 12th grade taking a, a class that ends with earning credit towards graduation, as well as some of our eighth-grade students. If students are in low, if they're in one of the three languages we offer that is a credit-bearing course for graduation and then living environment and algebra. So those are the students who are accelerated in science and/or math. And so we really want to make sure that whatever we roll out really has the student at the heart of it and doesn't, doesn't hinder students. But it also is that if students have done nothing over the last 11 weeks, they have time to catch up and make sure that they are getting the, the grade that they, that they want, they deserve, and that they've worked for. And so that email will go out to sta-, uh, the parents tomorrow. It'll go out to staff late tonight and go out to parents tomorrow afternoon. And as always, we appreciate the feedback because we got a lot of parents' feedback on, on final grades and GPAs and we try to use all that, plus what's best for students at the heart of it. And we'll be getting that out. The last piece of my COVID-19 update is just a thank you, thank you, thank you. I thank the board for their support along this way, their leadership and really staying focused. We've all talked about sort of the craziness in the world around us, the, the greater global world, our, our national landscape, the state-level concerns around budget crisis and even here in Penfield. And being able to look at our school board and our administrators, our teachers, all the adults that make up Team Penfield, I'm just so impressed and thankful for that never forgetting we're here for students, what's best for students, what's best for the children here that we serve, and, and really keeping a level head when it feels like the world around us has, has gotten a little, gotten a little insane because of COVID-19. So thank you to the board and thank you to the community who's partnered with us now and continue to be. And that wraps up my COVID-19 update, as well as superintendent reports, unless there's any question.
Hey, board members? Yes, Mark? Yep, Mark?
Tom, is there any, is the technology grant, the New York State Technology Grant still available for money for this?
Yeah, so there's the Smart Schools Grant. We're, we talked about this, and while we're able to fund with that, we've decided that we can do it this year. We have to do this again in four years, and that's my bridge, that's our bridge for making sure that we have funds if we need, when we need to repurchase equipment four years from now. And so our plan is, if we, if, you know, things don't turn around, if state aid doesn't change and we're still in a really difficult budget situation, we can rely on the SMART grant funds to get us through that four-year turnaround. Then eight years down the road, we may still have some funds left in those grants. But if not, then we'll have to, as a district, continue to plan on what we can do to make sure that this can continue into the future.
Right, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, Tom, thanks for the shout-out, that was nice to give recognition to all of us. And it, it's been a great team effort. We appreciate your leadership and Mark Sansucci and Barb Gregory and Jim Pfeifer. I mean, everybody's worked, I, I think everybody's really risen to the occasion quite well. And we have a lot to be proud of, even though this has been very difficult and the outcome is, you know, things are not working as... Nothing's perfect, like you were saying before. I, I think it's, I think it's good to take a moment and realize we are working very well as a team. So, and then if that's it, then I will say at the proper time, thank you, Dr. Pfeifer.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. All right, board members, we are on item number seven for facilities. Um, okay. Barb, if you could just tell that bird. All right, the next agenda item is approval of a single change order for the general contractor for the ongoing elementary additions project. This change order authorizes changes to the specifications to allow for adherence to the new job safety protocols and social distancing requirements due to COVID-19. The changes result in an additional cost of approximately $5,300, but allow work on the project to continue. The details are listed in the agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the change order as described in the agenda be approved?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none are opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Seeker Declaration of Lead Agency Status. Next on the agenda is an action related to the environmental quality review of a future project. The board has previously approved a purchase offer for 40 acres of property at 1364 Jackson Road. The district proposes to purchase this land for the purpose of construction of a district transportation operations center. The district is also considering various repairs and renovations at the district's buildings based upon the building condition survey. Approval of this project and of the land purchased will require a public vote, which has not yet been scheduled. At the April 21st, 2020 meeting of the Board of Education, indicated that it desired to be lead agency for the seeker review of this project. No other agency has objected. Approval of this resolution will allow the district to continue with the seeker process. This process must be complete prior to scheduling a vote. May I have a motion in a second for approval of the board's declaration of lead agency status for Seeker is listed in the agenda? Lisa, was there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Okay, award of construction contracts for the 2019 capital project. On May 21st, 2019, the district's voters approved a capital project for roofing replacement and other work at the district's buildings. The next agenda item requests approval of the bids that have been received and the cooperative purchasing agreements that will be used for completion of this work. The project is within budget. The construction manager has reviewed and is recommending approval of the low bidders, alternates, and cooperative purchase agreements listed in the agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the construction contracts and cooperative purchase agreements be awarded as set forth in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Let's see, one sec, please. I'll be right with you. Textbook approval. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the recommended textbooks as presented on May 12th, 2020, as they are listed in your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Budget vote, June 9th, 2020, budget vote and election. Board approval of the chairperson of election for the June 9th, 2020 vote is required. The chairperson of election is an eligible voter of the Penfield Central School District. That the Board of Education approved Megan Doherty Esquire to serve at the election of Board of Education candidates and vote on the budget on June 9th, 2020 as chairperson of election. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Election inspectors. Okay. May I have a motion in a second that the board approve the individuals named on your agenda as election inspectors for the June 9th, 2020 budget vote and election?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right, no president's remarks tonight, but we do have unfinished business. Revenue anticipation note, ran resolution. The next item on the agenda is authorization for the board president to sign any necessary paperwork for the issuance of a revenue anticipation note if state aid should be delayed because of the state's budget problems. This is a short-term note for cash flow funding in anticipation of revenue. The district does not have current plans to issue these notes. The resolution is being adopted as a precaution. This item was postponed at the last meeting and has been amended to reflect the requested annual authorization. The full text is printed in the agenda. May I have a motion in a second? The board approved the resolution as stated in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Only any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, no new business. Let's see, all right, there being no further business. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education, let's see, adjourn at 8:42 p.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.